Thank you, and well said, and mission accomplished.
Thank you, thank you.
You've been listening to a conversation with Councilman Ron Schmidt, who served the City of Sparks Board Five since June 11th, 2001.
Classic car fan to stand on Sparks every August for a week of classic rock and roll, great food, and beautiful machines. Hot August Nights is an iconic Sparks event that brings thousands of people and millions in revenue to the region each year after year. After a run of close to three decades, Hot August Nights is a huge success for the City of Sparks. The nostalgic celebration of mid-century cars and music generates an economic impact around $215 million for the region. In 2015, the event alone brought a half-million people to the town from 40 different states. Many booked hotel rooms for four-night stays. An increase in traffic helps many local businesses, from auto parts stores to restaurants. There are many changes after the 2015 event to include a new three-year agreement which gives the official hosting of the kickoff event to Virginia City. Now, every year, the Mayor of Sparks is proud to choose his favorite car at Hot August Nights. With hundreds of beautiful cars and trucks to choose from, it's never easy. This year, Mayor Gino Martini and his wife Ruth allowed us to tag along as they took on the very difficult task of choosing one car.
Here we are with the Mayor's City of Sparks Award, and our own Mayor Gino Martini coming out there to congratulate our winner of this award. And that's it for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. I'm Adam Mayberry. Thanks for watching, and be sure to stay in touch with the city on Facebook and Twitter, and the city's own mobile app. And remember, it's happening here.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
Cindy McNabb.
Thank you. In connection with what they've been saying, one of the things that I found very disheartening was, there was a group down there this weekend, David was that from a church group, that was passing out toothpaste, so all toiletry-type items. I think that's great that the church wants to do that, however, I don't believe Rock Park is the place to do it. We're trying to get them out of there, not bring them in there. So that's one thing that is bothering me. Ms. Ratty, I understand that you're our ward, that we're in your ward. Have you walked that river park? Have you done it at dusk? Did you feel comfortable about it? Pardon me? Okay. I'm not even allowed to walk our dog during the day along that river path because you get harassed. It's threatening to be walking down there. So don't feel comfortable about it. So I think what has disheartened so many of us is that it has taken so long for the city to acknowledge this. They've been down there a long time, not just this last year, they've been down there four or five years. It's steadily getting worse. It shouldn't have come to this. But we all want to be part of the solution. So whatever we can do to help out, we're there. But like I say, we don't want these churches coming down there handing out freebies. That's not the place to do it. Do it up at St. Vincent's, do it at the food hall, wherever. Not at the park. You've got too many citizens and kids and everything else down there. So, and especially once that bathroom gets opened up, who do you think is going to take control of that restroom down there? It's not the citizens. It's not the people going to the park. It's going to be them.
Okay, thank you, and I think Ms. Ratty made a good point to get a hold of One Trucking River and be a part of that. That's a good first step.
You bet it is.
Gatesport.
Good afternoon. I am living at the Rock, well, not Rock Park, but Rivers Edge Park, RV, right up against the walkway, the bike track. And I've been walking my dog, who's blind, not that that means anything, but anyway, I've been walking my dog for about six months, up and down the walkway from the, from Rock, from the RV park, both north and south. And when I first started, there was a couple people sleeping up under the bridge, up on the abutments, but they didn't bother anybody, they just stayed there, and that was all there, and they didn't impede traffic going past. But now, I don't dare go back past that bridge. There is, there's a half a dozen tents over there, plus people on the bridge, people blocking the road, the pathway, and it is obvious, obviously, I don't feel safe, and I haven't walked any further than that, I've turned around each time. I was also there when the experience, where the thing happened where George got accosted. I heard a shot, and then I went out to walk, I thought somebody was fooling around in the river or some such thing. But I went out afterwards to walking the dog, and I happened to go that way, and all of a sudden, I come up on, this guy laying on the, lying on the walk, people yelling, crying, moaning about, somebody's been shot. And it just occurs to me, if I'd been there just five minutes earlier, it could have been me. I don't carry a gun, or I didn't carry a gun, I'm changing my ways now, but that is a shame, that is one of the most beautiful walkways you could possibly imagine. Very pleasant, along the river, there used to be a lot, everybody used to say hello to everybody, now it's different. And I think the problem stems from the fact that Reno did something about their problem. They, they made it illegal for people to be camping there, so what'd they do? They came across the river. Plus now, we've got both Reno's and us, so it's twice as bad as it's ever been, and we need to do something about it.
Thank you, sir. So again, for everybody, that's exactly what we've done, we passed an ordinance that models Reno, and we're getting on it right away, so we're going to get that out.
Hope that works.
Okay, anyone else under public comment? Okay, comment, go ahead, Ron.
Another contribution that increased the people down at the river is when Volunteers of America, they were in the building over in Sutro, they had to leave because somebody had gone in and taken all the copper wire out, didn't have any heating, any air conditioning, couldn't, no electricity at all, they took all the wire out. So they had, they couldn't stay there, so that increased the population of the river. But just, and I'm happy about this, they caught a guy the other day over at the Bristlecone in Flick Ranch, and that's what he was doing, stealing copper, I didn't even think there's anything left. But they arrested him, and I hope they throw the book at him. No. No, it's in the flood zone.
Okay, we have another, Samantha Brocklesby, come on Samantha.
How are you guys? I own a business in Sparks, Nevada, and I'm really close to the Rivers Edge RV Park. And for the last several years, we have drastically noticed an increase of crime. It is from our homeless population, sadly, to say that, and they are stealing anything and everything that they can get their hands on. Just this past weekend, one of our homeless men that we have taken in to our business, we finally got him a place to live, he got a bicycle, and right out of the back shop, it was stolen. And it's sad, I mean, trying to kick a person when they're down, I understand that, I have a huge amount of empathy, but there is a way to have dignity when you're homeless, and there's a way not to have dignity, and right now, they, they need some other sort of assistance. They are defecating everywhere, human feces. If you go down on that riverwalk right now, I took my kids down there last weekend, it smells like a bathroom. It is disgusting. Is the city planning on any type of cleanup matter in reference to this? Because that's an environmental hazard. I mean, it's terrible. I was shocked to take my children down there. You know, the needles, the hypodermic needles, I'm not joking, when I said, we tried to take two bags every single time we go down to pick up garbage, you know, and it's, they're full and overflowing, the garbage cans overflowing, you can't even throw it away. We try to like put it in, and we take it over to our dumpsters. It's, it's really terrible. But they're going into businesses, and they're, they're stealing anything that they can. I mean, we had two of them walk in just this like, two weeks ago, stole a cellphone, and they sold, you know, one of my employee's lunch, but it's, it's just really terrible. These people are starving, they're hungry, they are definitely, I would say, a majority of them are on drugs. We try to go down there, we, we pass out, you know, like bags full of food, we have chips and, and drinks, and we tell them, you know, if you need help, I'm more than happy to take you and try to figure out if you're willing to work or whatever, you know, come pull weeds, something has to be done. They're not even willing to do that. You know, they are there, they want money, and they are aggressive. They will come right up to you. I had to call the Sparks Police Department here not too long ago, I'm a person who goes to work at 5:00 in the morning. My husband has said, "No more, you are not allowed to go to work at 5:00 in the morning." I used to be there at midnight, I can't be there after dark by myself. Almost every time, I have to call Sparks PD because someone is trashing my truck outside, they're stealing anything that's tied down, they're trying the doors, you know, I had my children underneath my desk one night when I'm working, it's like 11:30 at night, and this guy just opens up the doors, and thank God I have dogs. But just recently, like yesterday, someone poisoned my dogs with rat poison, you know? Last week, they threw a vat of urine on my dog, a human urine. I mean, something more, these people are, I don't know, they're, some of them are turning into animals, and they need a little bit more help, I don't know if it's a mental issue that we've got going on here, or the fact that they're just angry that they're in the situation that they're in. But we have to do something more quickly than what's happening.
Probably all of the above is what it is. Probably all of the above is what it is. And again, we are working on it, and, you know, keep us appraised if you hear of things or complaints, please call us. Again, what Julia said, get your group signed up with One Trucking River, and let's see what we can do to help these people, get them off the river, and make it a place where we want to be like it was in the past. So, again, thank you for letting us know, again, I more or less think we knew what you're talking about. We were maybe a little late to the table, but we're there now, and we will make it work, and I'm sure our police department is working hard on it. And, you know, it's a difficult situation, you know, some people don't want them to get their rear kicked enough and whatever, and then there's other people over here that have a different opinion, so it's not an easy thing, it's really not that easy, so we're working on it. Okay, anyone else under public comment? Okay, let's move on then to approval of the agenda, 5.1, anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
I'll move to approve, the agenda is submitted.
Does she have a second, Mr. Smith? Second. Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of March 28, 2016. Any omissions, corrections, or deletions? If not, looking for a motion, Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Ba, moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve the minutes of the March 28 meeting as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, let's move on to announcements, presentations, recognition items. 7.1, Spring Forward for Autism Fun Run, and presentation by Reno firefighter Art Reitz and Sparks Captain Tom Crumpets. And we have the proclamation here, do we not? Is this for 7.1? Oh, it's for 7.2. Okay, go ahead, make your presentation, and then we'll do the, yeah, sure, absolutely. Go do your presentation, and then we'll do the proclamation right after that. Thank you, sir.
Shall I start?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, and members of the Sparks City Council. My name is Art Reitz, and I've served as a firefighter for the city of Reno for the last 13 years, but more importantly, I'm a father to a wonderful child affected by autism. I'm here today to talk about a local nonprofit called the Justin Hope Foundation, which my wife and I co-founded four years ago, and to let you know, your very own Sparks Firefighters' Local 1265 and Sparks Administration have been helping support the foundation. The Justin Hope Foundation gives hope to individuals and families in northern Nevada affected by autism spectrum disorder and other neurodevelopmental disorders by providing support and other opportunities that will have a meaningful impact on the family as a whole. So I'll just give you a quick rundown on what we do. One of the ways we help the community is through what we like to call GAP, which stands for Giving Awards Program, where families, individuals, or schools apply for financial assistance. Our GAP program has helped families find the help they need to get a diagnosis, attend social thinking camps, go to summer camps, learn to ride a bike. We've bought many kids iPads to be used for as communication devices, just to name a few. Over the past three years, we have partnered with over 40 different local organizations or businesses, we have helped over 150 individuals, we have monthly support, family support groups which provide resources and support to the whole family, we hold sibling workshops to provide support for siblings of those with all disabilities. The Justin Hope Foundation, in the last three years, has given back close to $75,000 back to the community. The Justin Hope Foundation's latest endeavor is to train first responders on how to recognize the signs of autism and how to safely interact with the individuals. To date, we have trained over 300 first responders in northern Nevada. This council should be very proud. We have most of your police officers through our training, and hope to start scheduling your firefighters by year's end. Sorry. The Justin Hope Foundation also started a disability registry for our area. This registry is nowhere else in the state but up in northern Nevada. On a voluntary basis, parents or legal guardians fill out the registry with specific characteristics entered into the system. I'm sorry, with specific characteristics about the child or adult with a disability. The registry is then turned into our dispatch center and entered into the system. When an address is flagged to have had a registry connected to it, additional information will be displayed on the screen for the responders, for the responding officers or firefighters. This additional information could be that, that the child is nonverbal, doesn't like sound, doesn't like to be touched, or may tend to hide in certain places, helping our first responders devise a course of action even before they arrive at the residence. So mainly, I'm here today to give you kudos, to give the city of Sparks kudos, for allowing your firefighters to do what they do in the community. For the past three years, it has been our pleasure having the support of Sparks Firefighters' Local 1265, Sparks Fire Administration, and the support of Chief Garrison. I want to thank Sparks Captain Tom Crumpets, who is a father of a child affected by autism, for his continued support. Tom, on my right, is my right-hand man, when it comes to organizing and mobilizing, mobilizing anything to do with Sparks Fire. In recognition of Chief Garrison's approval, your Sparks firefighter will wear specialized uniform t-shirts during the month of April in support of Autism Awareness Month. Much of what we do for our community is because your firefighters show up to our events and make it a memorable, memorable one for our kids. So I'm here, Mr. Mayor, to let you know what an outstanding and dedicated department you have, from the chief all the way down to the firefighters. Lastly, our annual fundraiser called Spring Forward for Autism Run Walk is set for April 24th at UNR's Mathewson IGT Knowledge Center. Ooh, that's a mouthful. This is our only fundraiser we do, and this is the fundraiser that allows us to do what we do for the community here in northern Nevada. All proceeds benefit local families here in northern Nevada. We were honored last year to have Governor Sandoval participate with his daughter. I'd like to cordially invite each member of the council, city manager, and mayor, to come out and support the autism community. I'd like to leave you with flyers for the event and brochures about the Justin Hope Foundation. I thank you for your time today, and I hope to see some of you out there on April 24th.
Thank you, guys, for all the work you do in the community, it's really appreciated for everything you do, thanks.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on to 7.2, and then I'll read the proclamation, and then I understand, Tom, you're going to, you're going to accept it? Okay, I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas our city recognizes all those who live on the autism spectrum and celebrate the ways they strengthen our communities and enrich our world, and whereas those affected by autism are our colleagues, classmates, friends, and loved ones, and we benefit from their unique talents and perspectives. And whereas every human has fundamental rights to participate fully in society, live with respect, and have an opportunity to achieve their greatest potential, and whereas autism affects all persons regardless of race, religion, socioeconomic status, or geography, and whereas in one in 68 persons have been diagnosed on the autism spectrum. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Autism Awareness Month, and urge all employees and residents to honor advocates, professionals, family members, and all who work to build brighter tomorrows alongside those with autism, to create a world free of barriers to inclusion and full of understanding and acceptance of the differences that make us strong. Thank you. Okay, 7.3 is the presentation by the Dilworth STEM Academy Third Quarter Winners. Seventh grade projects include how to build and design parks, eighth grade projects involve musical instruments and sound waves. You were going to introduce, now I wanted to say one thing first, we've been having you guys give the presentation down there, and it's, the audience can't see anything but you guys is back, so I'd like it all, when you do your presentation, to come up here, we'll move off down there, and then you'll have the stage so everybody can see on TV, and then the audience can see everything that goes on, too, because it's a good presentation, I don't want everybody to miss anything, so, go ahead.
I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm the president, senior planner. Today I'm excited to present some, two groups of students from the Dilworth STEM Academy. Each year, the STEM Academy students have a third quarter project that is multi-subject. They cover this project in their math, English Language Arts, science, and design, research and design classes, and they have a presentation, and the winners of the presentation are here today to present to you. So I've been told that they're going to introduce themselves and so forth, I think we're going to start with the eighth grade, and then the seventh grade will follow that.
So if the eighth grade wants to come back up here around?
Good afternoon, I'm Baby Hug Bear, AKA Alicia.
I'm Bedtime Bear, AKA Isaac.
I'm Birthday Bear, AKA Brian.
I'm Laughalot Bear, AKA Samantha.
AKA Jessie.
We are the Care Bears.
Our driving question today is how can we promote music education for all students? Music helps develop important skills in school. According to The Importance of Music by Nigel Y., it is a proven fact that participating in a music program in school will develop your brain to a higher and smarter level than other students. According to Videoscribe, learning to play an instrument develops motor skills, and according to President Obama, children who learn how to play an instrument do better and succeed in math.
Hi, I'm Baby Hug. To expand on what President Obama said, we conducted a survey for our fellow peers, or just to stay sick, well, students who study a musical instrument are more likely to excel in all their studies like ELA, science, social studies, and math. Our results of our survey were students who play a musical instrument have a C or higher in their core classes and electives.
Based on the illustration on the board, it shows all of our sound waves, all of the sound waves that we've done with our instruments, our longitudinal sound waves. Whenever one of us plays with one of our instruments, it gives off different sound waves. Like Laughalot Bear, when she plucks her guitar, it gives off longitudinal sound waves. When Bedtime Bear blows on his harmonica, the vibration of the paper gives off sound waves. When Baby Hugs beats her drum with her bear stick, she, the vibrations from the drum rattle inside of the drum, which give off the sound waves. And then, when Birthday Bear hits his gong, it gives off a sound from when he hits it with his wooden stick. And when I twist my monkey drum, it hits the back and the front of the box, and like, it has different sounds.
Sounds are pretty cool, right? The way we hear sound is through the three main parts of our ear, which is the outer, middle, and inner ear. In the middle ear, there are three tiny bones, the malus, incus, and stapes. The three bones are connected to the clopia.
In the clopia, there are tiny hairs that vibrate from the three bones, the vibration travels through the clopia, then the vibration from the hairs goes to the clopia nerve, then from there is sent into our brain, and that's what we hear sound.
When it comes to budgeting in schools, music is the first to be cut, and I think most schools don't see that students being in a music program, program studying an instrument, they don't realize how positive, how it affects our students in a positive way in their learning. Uh, thank you, that's very nice. Thank you.
My name is Brian, and we're going to be presenting our park design. This is Daniella, that's Oscar, the little guy on the end over there, he's so safe. And we're representing our new redesign for Taylor Memorial Park. Our driving question was how can we design a park that's going to benefit our community? Well, we started by listing four basic amenities, right here. So I'm going to read you the first amenity, which is new playground. We are including this amenity to attract the attention of younger children, and according to Google Maps, this park has a very small playground that's in disrepair. The park has only three stars also, which is a pretty low rating, considering many of the parks down here are four stars. This supports our claim because a new playground will probably be a good start to improving this park. Now I'm going to pass it on to Oscar, who's going to tell you why we need a new nature enjoyment area.
We would include this amenity because it will get people close to nature. According to Google Maps.com, the park has little to no trees or nature for that matter. This supports our claim because this would make our park better to you. Now I'm going to pass on to Jose.
We would include this amenity because it keeps people fit. According to Google Maps.com, the park has only one large path and maybe disrepair. This supports my claim because it would allow for a much more internship, en, enjoyment for people to have a jog or a walk on the walk path.
And now he's going to pass on to Daniella, who's going to read why we're including a monument to our veterans.
We would include a monument in our park to honor our Nevada veteran population. According to www.com, Google Maps, there is no such statue in Sparks Reno area. This supports our claim because we should recognize our Nevada veterans. Now I'm going to, now I'm going to have Brian demonstrate our brochure.
So we have a brochure right here, which I'm going to pass around in a minute, and it basically goes over all of our amenities here, as well as a picture of the current park, and a slogan saying, "Visit us to celebrate and commemorate." And here we, as you open it, you see we have a picture of a statue that we're going to dedicate to the veteran population, as well as a park proposal letter that we didn't relay to, originally, we were going to send these to you guys. But we have one up here, in case you want to read it, and we're also going to read a paragraph from this. We have nonliving, which is abiotic, features, such as a playground and stuff, and then we have living features such as candles. Now I'm going to quickly read you a paragraph from our park proposal letter. "I'm sure the park was once a beautiful place to visit, but all good things have to come to an end, right? And this park met its end a long time ago. If not fixed, it may just become another dirt path."
And these are the primary, they eat the producers, which are their herbivores. And then we have our secondary, they're omnivores because they can eat the producers and the primary consumers. And our tertiary consumer is a guilla monster and we might not include this because they're venomous and makes it hard to close a wound.
Yeah, I want to have a guilla monster. And so now we're just gonna point out a little bit of what we've got going on here. I'm gonna have Daniela do that, so if you're ones over here. Daniela's gonna point out some of our key features that we're adding to the park.
Here we have a soccer field that we want to remodel because it was really crooked. And here there used to be a tennis court that, and we replaced it with a basketball court. And here we have a playground and we have a nature enjoyment right here and we added a pond and a picnic area.
And now we also have little areas where animals are. We have a key. We didn't have time to make a key, however, but you have, you can see them, I don't know if you can see them or not, but we have little markers for each animal. And the final thing we have is a list of the plants, which isn't here yet. And this, the park is actually located on Valley Road next to a community center, as well as a drawing that is done to the regulations for safety on playgrounds, which is a slide which is done by Daniela. And then we have pictures of each one of these amenities. And thank you all for listening. This is our design for the park.
Well, again, I want to thank Dilworth for putting on the show for us today. You guys are great, really. We enjoy these whenever you folks come over, so thanks again for all you do and keep it up. It's really, you're gonna be the future leaders and you guys look pretty good up here, so keep that in mind. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
You will.
Nice going, Chad.
Okay, next we have proclamation for Nat- National Architecture Month. Is there someone here to accept this? Okay, I'll read it anyway. "Whereas architecture can positively influence our attitudes and emotions and bring people together to preserve, strengthen or create a spirit of community. And whereas governments, religious industries and families have used architecture throughout history to express values, needs, capabilities and aspirations. And whereas architects work to build a better future for the city through well-planned and well-designed buildings and communities that embrace principles of livability and sustainability. And whereas the architectural professionals in Sparks strive to protect the public's health, safety and well-being. And whereas the month of April is designated as the National Architecture Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas members of the American Institute of Architects will join their neighbors in community exercises designed to instill a greater appreciation for proper stewardship of cities' environment and natural resources. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and professional architects of Sparks, Nevada and extend our sincere appreciation for the continued commitment to public services by these professionals. Now therefore I, Gino Martin, our martini mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as National Architecture Month." Thank you. Okay, next we have the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Somebody gonna come up and get this? Chief? "And whereas the men and women who answer these calls gather vital information and dispatch public safety assistance, often making the difference between life and death. And whereas our emergency communications dispatchers are among the more than 500,000 telecommunications specialists who work daily to protect the public and promote public safety. And whereas our emergency communications dispatchers are the first contact for a person in crisis and are knowledgeable, highly trained employees who work closely with police, fire and emergency medical personnel. And whereas Sparks residents enjoy a high standard of public safety and owe a great debt to the emergency communications personnel who apply their expertise in dispatching help to ensure public safety. Now therefore I, Gino Martin, our martini mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2016, as Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And join with the city council in acknowledging and thanking our public safety dispatchers: David Brown, Stephanie Buck, Lisa Buckles, Shelley Burkhart, Maureen Diette, Mary Hale, Mary Holbrook, Christopher Luciano, Lydia McCoy, Mika McGinn, Lori Montelaci, Monta, Montelaci, Montelatisi? That's close. Melissa Nabong, Rebecca Ormsby, Nancy Owens, Lisa Rose Brown, Sherry Terry, I always remember that one, and Denise Wagner. Thank you very much."
My name is Teresa Wiley and I am the administration manager over our dispatch center. And I want to say thank you very much for recognizing this hard-working group of people. They are dedicated to the citizens of Sparks. We've had some dispatchers that have been in our center working for 28 years, so thank you very much for giving them the recognition they so much deserve. And this is David Brown and Kristen Gianna.
Just want to say thank you very much for this honor, for recognizing the public safety dispatchers. I speak for myself as well as all of my coworkers. I just want to thank you for all the support from the city council, Teresa Wiley, our manager, our police chief, as well as the fire chief, Tom Garrison. And it's just an honor to serve our public and all the first responders. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent items. Does anybody want to pull a consent item, 8.1 through 8.3? Not looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson?
Quick question for Mr. Martini. Are we, I think we gave direction a couple of months ago that the final maps were gonna be approved at staff level. Where are we at in that process?
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. John Martini, city engineer for the record. I am currently dissecting Title 17. Where we thought it would be very simple to pull that out and put it into administrative selection, it's having a large trickle-down theory through the rest of the code, which involves design of our streets, the whole thing. I am hopeful to have it done within the next couple of months.
I'm here, I'm with the government, I'm here to help. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. With that, I just, I will approve items 8.1, 8.1 through 8.3.
Have a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve said items 8.1 through 8.3. Further discussion? Signon, please, vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, general business consideration and possible award of a contract to provide engineering services for the North Truckee Drain Pipe Extension Improvements with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. in the amount of $251,000.045. Mr. Hummel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martini, members of council, for the record. Andy Hummel, utility manager for the City of Sparks. Good, I got it right. So this item being presented, it's an engineering services contract with Stan Tech for history, the North Truckee Drain realignment. Basically this blue line here, once that's complete, this green section here is existing We don't need that for the overall relocation of work, but if we pipe it somewhat concurrently, we can receive a lot of benefits. So we'd like to go ahead and get that engineering started so we can tie it to the overall project. That's, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Hummel. Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, Andy, we're gonna do this in concurrent with the finishing of the North Truckee Drain?
Yeah, with the Phase 3 portion. Basically, as we excavate that, gonna be generating good usable fill, slightly more than we would need to fill in that existing ditch.
And so we gave a $20 million limit for bonding purposes. Will this, by adding this on, this will stay under our $20 million limit still?
Yeah, we've looked at all the numbers. We think construction-wise, for the realignment's gonna be about 13 to 15 million, kind of open with the current economy a little bit there, but, and then this would be a little over 2 million.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to award the contract to provide engineering services for the North Truckee Drain Pipe Extension Improvements with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated in the amount of $251,045.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.1. Any further discussion? Signon, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
9.2 is a presentation, consideration, discussion and possible action to adopt Resolution Number 3291, acknowledging the health benefits of voluntary emission reductions and committing to support, support the air quality management division's ozone advance program. But?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the council. For the record, Neil Cruz, deputy city manager, here to introduce Charlene Albee. She is the division director with the Washoe County Health District's Air Quality Management Division. And she's here to talk to you about, really, Gino just took the words right out of my mouth, so I'll go sit down. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. We're in front of you today for two purposes that we've kind of combined together. The Air Quality Management Division has been around since the early 60s, late 70s, or early 70s, operating under the Clean Air Act as a direct delegate from EPA in San Francisco as our regional office. We've had some pretty big achievements here recently and Councilwoman Ratty had requested that we come give you an update on some big achievements that we've had recently. And we thought we'd go ahead at that point and also present to you the possible resolution, adoption of the resolution for our ozone advance program, which is going to be one of our strongest tools for our next challenge that we will be taking on here shortly. So what I thought I would do is I would go ahead and give you a brief update on air quality, what it is, what we do, why we do, and hopefully that'll give you some information that will help you to support our resolution. So air quality management is basically a process. What we do is we have these standards that are set by EPA under the Clean Air Act amendments. They set the health standards for select pollutants that have been identified to have the most significant impact on public health, but also are the most prevalent of the pollutants that we have. So we monitor our air pollution levels, we compare those with our EPA standards. If everything is in compliance, we're meeting those standards, we just continue in that process. In the event that we don't meet those standards, then we start into our planning process. So we compare with our standards, we identify the pollutants that we are not attaining the standards, we come up with strategies to reduce those pollutants, and then we implement and enforce those strategies through our permitting and enforcement program. If all of that works and we do actually have measurable reductions, then when we monitor the next time, we should be able to demonstrate that we're in compliance with those standards. The tricky part of this is that EPA is always and per the Clean Air Act is required to review the standards every five to 10 years. So as new technology catches up, as new health and research is produced and developed, then the standards have a tendency to become tightened and strengthened. And that is, the ultimate goal is to protect the public health of our citizens. So here are the ambient air quality standards as they stand today. PM 2.5 is particulate matter of 2.5 microns in diameter or smaller, and that's what we call our respirable particulate matter. That's a product of combustion that's actually able to be inhaled and gets down deep into the lungs and that causes a lot of our lung diseases, triggers asthma, things like that. The PM 10 is a larger, more coarse particulate matter. We see a lot of that from dust, from the smoke that comes in from fires, things like that. Ozone I have bolded here because this is our current challenge. Right now our eight-hour standard is 75 parts per billion, we're currently at 71. So we are in attainment of that pollutant. There is a new standard coming out that I'll explain here in a moment, which is providing our challenges, and that's the resolution that's in front of you today. Carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide are products of fuel combustion, so anything that has natural gas, gasoline, diesel, propane, anything like that, those are the pollutants that come out from those. Lead has not been a problem in this area, and actually unless you have a major industrial source that emits lead, with the removal of lead from gasoline, most of those problems across the country have been eliminated. So if we don't meet the health standards, then we are classified as being in non-attainment. Number one, it means our air is unhealthful, that we are actually exposing our population to an unhealthy atmosphere. That in and of itself requires us to take action. We need to develop plans, the, we can get measurable emission reductions from all of our sources so that we can achieve attainment of the standards. If we don't and we continue to exceed the standards, we are classified as non-attainment. EPA does have the power through the Clean Air Act amendments to halt and hamper our economic development. The biggest thing that we have to look at is if we are designated as non-attainment, they will give us a timeline in which we have to become attainment. If we fail to meet that, then they will start a clock on us and give us one more extension of when we have to meet and attain those standards. If we do not, then they do have the power to hold our highway funds. And at that point in time, economic development will begin to suffer. I can tell you that when we have new businesses looking at moving into our area, if they're a significant size, a major manufacturing or industrial business, the very first question they will ask us is what is our attainment status? And it will be of whatever pollutant that they emit the majority of. They do realize industry and business that in a non-attainment area, they would be required to put on additional pollution control measures. They'll have not only the cost of the equipment to put in, the cost to maintain those, their compliance assurance, it's very resource-intensive. And so if you're looking, if you're in your discovery mode of where you're gonna move your new business, you're obviously gonna go to an area that's in attainment so that you can avoid those costs. There's also a quality of life that is figured in, so people that are looking to move businesses, have employees, they want a quality of life for their employees. So that's, that's where our, our role comes into play, that we need to do whatever we can to try to meet all of these health-based standards. So when we go to developing our strategies, we identify our sources that contribute, and I put to ozone here because that's our current pollutant that we really need to, to be aware of. We identify our programs and technologies, that's where the emission reductions come in. Whether they are voluntary or mandated, we do have to reduce so that we can... EPA does have the power, through the Clean Air Act amendments, to halt and hamper our economic development. The biggest thing that we have to look at is if we are designated as non-attainment, they will give us a timeline in which we have to become attainment. If we fail to meet that, then they will start a clock on us and give us one more extension of when we have to meet and attain those standards. If we do not, then they do have the power to hold our highway funds, and at that point in time, economic development will begin to suffer. I can tell you that when we have new businesses looking at moving into our area, if they're a significant size, a major manufacturing or industrial business, the very first question they will ask us is what is our attainment status? And it will be of whatever pollutant that they emit the majority of. They do realize industry and business that in a non-attainment area, they would be required to put on additional pollution control measures, they'll have not only the cost of the equipment to put in, the cost to maintain those, their compliance assurance, it's very resource-intensive. And so if you're looking, if you're in your discovery mode of where you're gonna move your new business, you're obviously gonna go to an area that's in attainment, so that you can avoid those costs. There's also a quality of life that is figured in, so people that are looking to move businesses, have employees, they want a quality of life for their employees, so that's, that's where our, our role comes into play, that we need to do whatever we can to try to meet all of these health-based standards. So when we go to developing our strategies, we identify our sources that contribute, and I put to ozone here because that's our current pollutant that we really need to, to be aware of. We identify our programs and technologies, that's where the emission reductions come in, whether they are voluntary or mandated, we do have to reduce, so that we can meet standards, and then we develop, promote, and implement these programs and the technology. The pollutants that we have had issues with here in the past, carbon monoxide was one of our first ones, in nineteen seventy-eight, we were designated as non-attainment, so the control strategies, you can see there, we had vehicle smog checks, the oxygenated fuel programs, when you go to the, put gas in your tank, it says this fuel contains up to ten percent of ethanol, that's where that came from, originated. Solid fuel burning restrictions, this is our wood stove program, our outside wood burning, refuse burning was prohibited, so those programs altogether actually helped us get back into attainment for the ozone, or the carbon monoxide standard in two thousand and eight. PM ten is a challenge that we've had since the Clean Air Act was first promulgated. It started with TSP, which is total suspended particulate, which is where the science at the time just identified everything that's airborne that we could possibly breathe. As research moved along, the standards were reduced down to PM ten, and we were not able to make those, they tightened the standards, they changed the hours that we look at these, the averaging periods, and it's all we have to remember in an effort to protect our public. As we find out these things that harm our public, we try to be responsive and protect, reduce those emissions to protect our healthy community. So this is the big achievement that Councilwoman Ratty had wanted us to come talk to you about. In January of two thousand and sixteen, we were actually designated as attainment for the PM ten standard, and that's the very first time since the standards have come out. I would like to say that it's all my doing, that everything's great and wonderful, but this really is forty-plus years of effort that have gone in, not only from our staff, but our community, our businesses, our leaders such as yourselves that have helped to promote what we've done, and so, at this designation in January, Region Nine EPA was happy to announce that every single area and district in the state of Nevada is now in attainment for all criteria pollutants, and that is the very first time that has ever happened, so. That was a pretty big deal for us, we did get some national attention, and we're very proud of the work that we've done, and, but we have to remember that we're not done yet. So with our control strategies that we have in place, the dust control regulations were probably one of the biggest reasons that we were able to get into attainment, but then we also have street sanding and sweeping, as you may see these days, right before the storm, you see the brine solution goes out on the road instead of the street sand, because sanding was one of our problems, that after the snow would melt, we'd be left with all this sand on the road, and everybody drives around and the, gets kicked up, and then our brown crown moves in, so. Street sanding, sweeping, our wood stove regulations, and then our green, yellow, red burn code is one of the most effective programs that we have, and that's the one where we outreach during our burn season, which is November first to the end of January, that is broadcast through social media, the newspaper, the radio, if today is a, a no-burn day, we ask everybody to please stop burning, and we can actually see, when we go from a green burn code to a yellow burn code, a significant reduction pretty quickly, that our community is very receptive to that, and so that's one of those programs that we depend on behavior of our population to help us control our emissions. So that brings us to ozone, this is our current challenge, we were actually non-attainment for the one-hour NAX, designated in nineteen ninety-one. In two thousand and eight, they rescinded the one-hour standard and went to an eight-hour standard, and we actually, through the reduction control programs that we had from the ninety-one standard, were able to be in attainment. I started working with Washoe County Air Quality in nineteen ninety-five, and I can tell you that when we were in non-attainment, there were some very difficult conversations had with industries that were looking to locate here. The one that was the most painful was when Starbucks was looking at locating in the Reno area, and this was their ma, their big roasting facility. They were actually in escrow for property out in Sted, and when they got to air quality and we told them that we were non-attainment for ozone, that they were gonna have to put on close to ten million dollars' worth of air pollution abatement equipment, they backed out and they moved to Gardnerville, and that's why that plant is in Gardnerville. So we are intimately and painfully aware of the difficulties that come when we have non-attainment issues in our area. So the new standard that EPA promulgated in October of two thousand and fifteen revises our ozone standard to seventy parts per billion, our current design value is seventy-one, so we are actually one part per billion over the standard, which would make us non-attainment. We have some time, we've got a schedule, which I'll go over here in a moment, with things like this resolution that we're trying to get adopted, I think that we can make some change, but it's gonna take a lot of work on all of our parts. Our control strategies, since we were non-attainment for ozone before, we do have all of our requirements in place, we're not looking at this point to have to adopt any further control measures. We are going to hopefully be able to get some voluntary emission reductions, which will be able to get us down that one part per billion, get us back into attainment. We'll, we're, we're hoping, EPA's modeling analysis is predicting that even if we do go non-attainment, that based on the federal standards that are already in place, we should meet the twenty-twenty deadline. I'm, I'm not one of those that's gonna sit back and just wait to see if that was correct, so. So a little background on ozone, how does it form? It's actually a photochemical reaction that happens when our nitrogen oxides mix with our volatile organic compounds in the presence of sunlight. In the summertime, our ozone season is typically June to August, September, get up in the morning, it's a beautiful sunshiny day, and then a little bit after lunchtime, it starts getting hazier and hazier, and by three or four o'clock, you're looking up going, wow, where'd the brown crown come from? Well, this is where the brown crown comes from, it actually is just a bowl that we sit in, and we create our own soup. So sources of NOx and VOCs, our primary source is on-road vehicles, for NOx, off-road vehicles, which is our planes, trains, construction equipment, that type of stuff. If you look, our point sources is our industry, we have them very strongly regulated, they're a very small piece of the pie, so leaning on our industry anymore is not going to solve our problem, so we need to start looking at the other places that we currently don't regulate. Idling of diesel equipment out on construction sites is one of the things that we're gonna be looking at, so that we can, we've identified our, our sources, so now we need to come up with our programs on how to reduce them, so that we can go in and implement those. So here's our current strategies, we have our federal tailpipe and fuel standards, EPA has got the tier-three fuel standards for vehicles coming out in two thousand and seventeen, as our vehicles are retired and people buy new vehicles, we're expecting to see some significant reductions from that. Then we have our current existing air quality regulations. The voluntary strategy is the biggest thing we can promote right now is our ozone advance program, and this is a program that was established by EPA, we applied to get in, we were accepted, that provides us a toolkit of proven control sta, strategies, and the flexibility to choose those strategies that will work for our community. An example of this is, we would not get a big emission reduction if we were mandated to do marine engines. A Bay Area, Long Beach Harbor, those guys would get lots of benefits from marine engines, we just don't have enough around here that we would get significant reductions, so. The flexibility of the program to tailor it to our needs was what we thought was most enticing, that we could get some voluntary reductions in order to avoid the federal mandates, and that is truly what we're trying to do, is recognize the importance of the issue, come up with the voluntary programs, we're engaging our community, Associated General Contractors Builders Association, the chambers, we've all had meetings already, we're looking at a number of programs. The reducing vehicle miles traveled is the work that we do with RTC, promoting our regional transportation systems. Reducing or eliminating tailpipe emissions is our idle reduction campaign, we're working with our stakeholders. And then smart growth and partnerships is our built environment, and that really is one of the most important parts of the resolution that we're having you consider today. If we can get people to consider ozone advance opportunities in the planning of developments, so we have complete streets, we have means for bike lanes and walking paths, so we can have the promotion of alternative transportation, we get significant emission reductions from those. But there's also other things, if you have public developments that are going on, so programs or capital improvement projects, if you can specify in those that they use tier-two or cleaner engines for their equipment that's operating, we get significant emission reductions out of that, so. There's a wide range of things that we actually are looking and hoping to get out of the resolution. So here's our ozone designation timeline. Right now, we're trying to get our voluntary strategies, we have to make our initial recommendations in October of two thousand and sixteen to EPA, and basically, we turn over our data from two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and based on that data will be what decides if we are attainment or not. So I have a lot of hope that reductions that we get now, we will be able to show a downward trend for two thousand and sixteen, and EPA has acknowledged that we are in this program, and they're willing to look at our two thousand and sixteen data also, so if we can move our target from the end of fifteen to the end of the two thousand and sixteen ozone season, and we can have some real reductions, we may be able to slip down that one PBB and actually be in attainment. So EPA's initial designations are supposed to be by October of two thousand and seventeen. If we are non-attainment, which we all, we have to acknowledge the fact that that could happen, we have to meet our attainment by twenty-twenty. EPA, this is where I said before, EPA's modeling, from a bunch of really smart computer scientists at Research Triangle Park in North Carolina, think that we can do it with just the federal standards. I don't think it's prudent to sit back and wait to see if that computer model was correct, I think it's best for us to go ahead and go for the voluntary control measures that we can get to try to put the odds in our favor, being from Nevada. So there's our website, Keep It Clean is our campaign banner that we operate under, and rcleanair.com is our website, down in the lower right-hand corner there is Air Now. If you go onto our website, if you actually are interested in getting air quality updates, you can click on there and register, and it will send you emails for whatever standard you wanna set up, that you can get updates and notifications as we're going. So that's the, the presentation, basically to give you the background on where we're at. So the ozone advance program on the resolution that in front of you is basically our tool, this is our toolkit to take out to our public, to try to get our voluntary reductions, so we can avoid the federal mandates. With the adoption by the board, or the council here, we're hoping that we can then take that to the planning commissions, both regional and your own community development agencies, and point to them and say, this is, this is the support that we've gotten from the council, and we'd like you to consider this, and then we are all working for, to protect the health of our community, recognizing it's two-part, it's not only the health of our citizens, but it's the health of our economic development also, and whatever we can do to support this is going to promote both of those programs.
Okay, questions? Ms. Ratty?
Thank you.
Ms. Shaw?
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you for coming, and hope that the members of the council see, I feel like we spent the last year becoming relatively intimate with wastewater treatment and nitrogen levels, and understanding how wastewater could really affect development in the region, and so when this became an issue for the Health District, I thought that it might be helpful for the rest of the council to understand how air quality affects economic, economic development moving forward. Wanted to take a minute to celebrate the twenty-sixteen attainment, because that was a big deal, and many of you worked towards it, but thought it was important that we were aware of what was going on with ozone, too, knowing that really could have an impact on economic development moving forward, so, really proud of the work that the Health District is doing, really proud of how proactive this particular team is to make sure that we don't get there, but they're gonna need some help, so thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't remember becoming intimate with the wastewater, right?
I feel like I know more than we do.
I'm sorry, maybe, maybe I missed something? I haven't missed any council meetings or anything, so. Mr. Smith?
Well, we became intimate with cats, too.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charlene, good report. The only, when you got down to the end and you were talking about reducing the VMTs, I was going, boy, we're, all of our new development is outside of town, it's, we're moving out, but, you know, RTC has four electric buses, and I think we're gonna have four more here pretty quick. What surprises me is Las Vegas doesn't have any electric buses.
Exactly, that's an example of how proactive our RTC is up here, they actually applied for federal tiger grants, and we have submitted letters of support on those, so they got the first one to do the downtown Reno, so now the second tiger grant, they were actually awarded a second one, is to do the fourth imperator project.
Yeah, we actually have more money than Las Vegas did.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Yes, we did, so, a lot of it, however they decide to, to award those projects, a lot of it is the interest and the support of the community, the elected bodies. If you have a program that's a great program, but it doesn't have the support of the community and the elected officials, it's gonna be very difficult to get it put through, so when you have a positive community like we do here, it really helps push those, those projects through, so.
They're being very transparent, too, they're really engaging with the public, letting them know what's going on.
Right.
That helps, but, and I, I think electric vehicles are now becoming more usable for people, they can go further, and you know, so, I don't know that I'll have one in my lifetime, but I'm sure they'll be around.
Right, and we'll just continue to work with them on expanding the service, they do an awful lot of work to see where the demand is at, and so if, as development moves out, demand will shift, and they are, are receptive to that.
And I think, pretty soon, you'll see new developments with, offering as an option to buy a house with a charger in the garage, like the Tesla chargers that they have.
I, I expect that there's a lot of things coming. We were just at a meeting of the Green Transportation Summit in Tacoma, Washington, last week, and the Department of Transportation actually got up and said that we are going to see more change in the next ten years as far as transportation, more than what happened when Henry Ford came out with the Model T and the mass production. So there is an awful lot coming, we are not only gonna be seeing it in our personal vehicles, but also in the commercial vehicles, there's, there's a huge movement that's coming with alternative fuels, there was just a press release not too long ago, that UPS is looking at putting in a natural gas charging station at the Sparks Distribution Center, in the next week or two, they're actually doing the testing of the trucks coming over from Sacramento, just to make sure that the technology and the vehicle works before they do the infrastructure, and everybody's very excited about that, because we get huge emission reductions out of programs like that.
Good report, Charlene, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank, thank you for your report, super informative. The que, question I have is, is these standards for county or state, the seventy that we have to reach?
Those are federal standards, and it's bi-hydrographic basin, so what we do is we look at, countywide is where my jurisdiction is, so we look at the whole county. We have monitors set up around the county, that we monitor the various pollutants, so we have them out in, in Lemon Valley, we have them all around Reno, Sparks, we're in the process of setting one up out at Lazy Five, so that we can start monitoring in, in Spanish Springs, so. What we look at is wherever the highest concentration is, that's our design value monitor, currently the design value for this one is coming out of downtown Reno. The hydrographic basin is basically, if you look around town, wherever the ridge lines are at, that's our basin, so where Reno and Sparks is primarily located, most of Sparks, is located in the Truckee Meadows hydrographic basin. If you go out into Spanish Springs, since you go up and over the hill, that's a separate hydrographic basin. So if we do go non-attainment, it would be the Truckee Meadows basin, and potentially some areas north where we have a lot of our travel and transit, people commuting in from outer regions, so, we would, and this is actually something that EPA has promoted, reduce down the size of our non-attainment area to as small as we can, so Incline Village would probably be pulled out of the non-attainment area, Washoe Valley, you know, areas that don't have a significant impact on the non-attainment zone where we monitor it.
So the zone, the requirement that the EPA is asking for, the seventy parts per million is per basin?
Right.
Nationwide?
Nationwide.
Nationwide, and we could be non-attainment- Nationwide, and we could be non-attainment in Truckee Meadows, but attainment out of Spanish Springs, or, or out?
North, north, yeah, north of the Spanish Springs development could potentially be attainment.
Okay. And then today, so today, basically, you're asking for our support of voluntary compliance to try to get down to that 70, the new number. So our support of your goal to do that, and then when you have it from the other entities, then does a whole public service campaign, public awareness, kind of where does it go after the entities, if all entities have supported it, where do you go? Where does it go from there?
So the next step will be going to our planning commissions, so that we can start affecting the built environment. But we're also doing outreach campaigns. So we are in the process of doing an idle-free campaign, which we're hoping to get out by the end of May, definitely by the first of June, because that's when our ozone season kicks off. So we can, we'll have radio, we'll have some TV, you know, the 10-second spots at the end of the news. We have a full insert that's being put together that's going to be in Reno News and Review, so we can get that distributed. So yes, this will be an out-and-out blanket across the area. We've got all our social media keyed up, so that we can push out recommendations.
Okay, so that your outreach is not just to us as a city and our vehicles, and, but to every individual living in the Truckee Meadows, on how, what you, what I could do individually?
Right.
That would help lower this number, and that everybody has a part to play and the ability to help, help lower the ozone.
Right. Recognizing that our motor vehicles is our largest source of emissions, the campaign slogan is "You're the Key, Be Idle-Free." So we want to put it to every single person, every single company, every organization that can actually look to their membership and get it down to that single person, that every single person can make a difference. So whether it's you don't idle your vehicle, or you ride your bike to work, or you take public transit to work, the city of Sparks has been great with our Bike-to-Work program, that we always have the mayoral challenge. All of these things come together to start trying to change behavior. So we, we will look to the, the planning agencies, community development, to start trying to change the built environment, but at the same time, we have to look at people's behaviors, because those have the most effect on everything that we do.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Ratty?
I have a question. So the, if you have a significant construction project, like the Pyramid-McCarren interchange, which is likely to create some idling, is that enough to make an impact?
So I think if we look at all of our projects, but yes, if we have a major project going on, if we can get the contractors to use cleaner equipment and reduce their idling, we'll start seeing some significant reductions.
I was actually thinking more of the people in traffic who are in traffic.
The people in traffic and the congestion does create more emissions, because they're sitting there idling at stoplights. And the more times you have to sit through those stoplights, the more times you're, the more amount of emissions you're generating. So by having projects like that that are congestion mitigation, that is absolutely going to have a benefit, so that we can keep the traffic flowing instead of just having it sitting there.
But during the 18 months when the traffic is going to be moving, which is during the timeframe of the testing, which is why I was asking.
Oh, yeah. I don't know that that one project will have a significant impact when you look at the entire region, but it could definitely, we do have a monitor that sits right next door at the post office.
Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to accept the resolution as presented.
Second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Smith to approve Resolution Number 3291. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it, and we'll keep in touch, so that we can make sure we all get to where we need to be.
Thanks, Shirley. Those of you in the audience, you might want to turn your, if you have your cellphone turned up, Jim, you might want to turn it down, please.
That's a $5 call, Mr. Smith.
No, Jim, I couldn't resist. I'm sorry. Okay, 9.3, Presentation Discussion and Possible Approval of a City Reorganization Plan Requiring Complement Changes in the Management Services Department, Community Services Department, and City Attorney's Office for Past Lecture. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, your city manager, for the record, and I have many fault, the human resources manager with me. We're basically going to be discussing, the primary item here today is 9.3, going over a reorganization plan that I'm suggesting, that's going to be kind of major city departments. And then nine, actions 9, 4, and 5, or 9, 4, 9, 5, 9, 6, will be directly related to what action the council takes on 9.3, and then 9, 7, and 9, 8, again, will be based on action that's taken between 9.3 and the others. So with that in mind, I'm going to focus on, on 9.3. A lot of things have happened citywide since really the year 2000, and then into 2010. We had the Great Recession that really kind of started hitting us in 2007, '08, and one of the first things that we did was, we created the Sustainable Sparks Services Initiative. And during that, there was a couple of different projects and phases that came into being in the 2008, '09, '10, and '12 timeframes. One of the main things that was there is we're a service industry, and so the only thing we really do is produce a service by the people that work for us. And one of the things during that recession time, we took a very hard look with the direction from the council and through the manager's office, that anytime there were open positions within the city, that position is automatically put on manager's hold, and then some questions have to be answered before that position can be rehired. And those questions really are, can the job be eliminated? So if the answer is that the job cannot be, then the next question is, can the job be modified? Does it need to be doing something different today than maybe it was doing in the past? And in some instances, there's enough frequency that we've gone through those motions, and we've looked at job descriptions, and we've looked at duties, and maybe the job doesn't need to be changed currently at this time. But for those jobs where it is determined that either through change or through status quo that we are going to recruit, then with kind of the manager and council's policies, we've asked ourselves two questions. One, do we have the talent internally, so the recruitment can be done solely internally, or do we need to go to the outside to get the talent that's needed for that job position? And so with those guidelines in place, about six weeks ago, your administrative services director, Chris Iverson, tendered her resignation notice to the manager, and so the manager, by his own policy, got to put that job on hold. And so what you have today is a result of the discussion and the analysis from that one positioning, that one position opening up. So it was determined is the job really couldn't go away. It was determined that it did need to be modified some, and that with recruitment process, there was an internal candidate. So I'd had some conversation with different members of this council, talking about succession planning, where things were going as it relates to the senior staff of the city. As part of that discussion, I asked Mr. Krutz, who's the community services director, to take a hard look at his organization, recognizing that we have a couple of focuses that we need to be working on. One is infrastructure. There's a lot of infrastructure work that's going on that we are controlling. Second is economic development, and there's the development community, and it's not just the building of the houses, but it's the other things that are a direct correlation to what's going on in this valley, through the activities out in the tri-center, to activities just in this valley itself, that eat on your economic development partner is generating. They're, again, are targeting 3,000 new jobs this year, and that's the third year in a row, and those jobs are not jobs that have anything to do with what's going on down the canyon. So we took a hard look at, what do we need to do today to start changing how we deal with development? Because we recognize that we have some processes in place, and one of the things that I recognize as a manager with help from community services, is it seemed like every project that starts, starts at a senior planner level, saying, "I want to put this project on that piece of property. Can I do it?" By the time the planner gets done with it, that kind of starts a motion of a process that goes through a planning process, then drives it into, to the building and safety department from the standpoint of looking at it and doing building permits and, and plan reviews, and getting us all the way through the infrastructure that are, is affected to the city. So it seemed to make sense, if we were going to be moving some duties around, that we really focus on that development leg and that process. Well, building new is great, but one of the problems that this council's endured for a long time is, once we've got it built, how do we keep it nice? And so we have a code enforcement problem. One of the things this council's done with work with your staff is we've changed our code, we've brought in a hearing officer, and that process is just getting started to try to shorten down some of the issues that we have for their code enforcement function. So code enforcement kind of starts with the grand plan of things, again, back to planning, then it works through compliance. So that became a second process that I wanted to take a hard look at, and if we're going to make changes in community services, I felt that that was very important, that that also be looked at, so that we can maximize our ability to do code enforcement as quickly as possible, because we have not been very successful with that in the past, and we're still not successful today. So then looking at the rest of the organization of the community services department, really, that's healthy and working well. The, the treatment plant has got a lot going on, there's been quite a bit of management change in the last several years, it's working well. And while we have room for improvement, we're working on that as best we can, and it's a team effort, and we're making great strides. In our maintenance area, again, some management change in the last couple of years, and the processes that are in place there, and the relationships, both internally and externally, are working well, and while there's room for improvement, always, we're making great strides, and the management team that's out there, along with the team that's doing the work, is doing quite well. In the city engineer's side, with a lot of the development that's happening, there was a lot of attention being spent by your city engineer on that development. Well, by isolating that, some of that work, and putting it over into a separate process leg, it takes some pressure off and lets the city engineer really focus on infrastructure. So with that in mind, we kind of drafted up a plan. Well, at the same time that we were having that conversation, the city attorney's office had approached me for some changes that they were looking for, and we determined if we're going to have the complement open, and we're going to make some changes, we should go ahead and do some things there. So I'll start with the easy part, with the, kind of the, the attorney's office, and then we'll finish up on community services. We're starting to see quite a bit of civil work that we need to do on a daily basis, and the attorney's team and his, and the lawyers that, that do that work, do phenomenal work, and you see from the statistics every year that there's an awful lot of demands against the city, and we're able to, to not pay those demands out. We had a rough year last year, but that's uncommon. One of the things that we've done in that work is we've had a civil engine, or civil attorney, who's been on contract, or there's working in a limited number of hours. We felt that it's necessary to really kind of step that up and, and get the hours that are currently being spent, and the hours necessary to get to a full-time job, and really have that focused, and the best way we could do that is by having an additional body. So we're bringing in, we want to bring in a new full-time civil attorney, and we would stop using the contract attorney. That helps to start to pay for that differential. So with all those things wrapped together, and kind of focused on internal customer service and external, before you is the plan that I'm asking for your approval that makes a few changes. One, it allows me to promote from within, eliminating the administrative services director position, and making it an assistant city manager that will have duties for all the things that I deal with, as well as administrative services and some citywide projects. The second thing, because that will vacate a position, because I am, I will be suggesting as, in an item later, who that person would be, that would vacate the current customer, current community services director position. So we took a look internally, again, we put that on hold immediately as part of the process, and looked at across the board on who's in the organization and who's ready to be promoted, and through the succession plan that community services has been doing, who's barely been working towards that goal of being the next director. And so that position is, is able to be filled internally. That would then open up a position for city engineer. And so we had several, we had several people that we thought might be qualified to do that, and we had some conversations, and while we've not chosen anybody, we'll go through some internal interview processes for it. It appears that we have at least one candidate that's ready, able, willing today to do it. There's a couple that have kind of been on the fence and have more or less taken their names out of contention. Well, that takes us over to the code enforcement function and to the development function. By driving those with senior planners in both of those legs, we really have two very qualified people that are in our planning department today. The question would be, which leg would they sit on top of, if you will, and which one they would be best suited for? That's going to take an interview process and then an appointment process, which will be done internally. And so at the end of the day, kind of two questions have been asked, as I've been discussing amongst your body and with others. One, the first question is, how can you have one open position generate six promotions? Well, I think I've just explained how we got to there, because we weren't looking to replace one-to-one, we looked at it and said, whether opportunities are there. So it's actually ended up with six, with six promotions out of that within customer service and the city manager's office. The second question, because there's been some names put in some boxes already, the question is, well, wait a minute, we normally in our, in our process have used a civil service style promotion process, and we take a look at who's available based on doing an application process. Well, I would submit that after the recession, and some of the things that we've done after S S S I, we've taken a lot harder look at, rather than working people through an application process, where at the end of the day, it's very subjective, and a manager is going to pick the person that they believe is most qualified. I've actually done some of those conversations offline, in order to put some of the names in the boxes. And so we've talked to the people that we believe have the qualifications to sit in those that are already kind of, today predetermined by me, and there are three positions that will still be open, and we'll have to decide where we're going to go, but there are, there are some very limited abilities to fill those by people that are currently within the city. There's only a couple of planners that actually are, are available for the two planning positions. The only real question is which seat? Same thing in engineers. So with that, what we're asking today is for you to approve the plan that I've put before you, and then that will trigger changes to resolutions for job titles, monies, and then also at the end, that would trigger two appointments, which by the charter, your manager appoints those positions, but it does require ratification by this council to approve their position and the subsequent employment agreement that goes with those. And so with that, I'm prepared to answer. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Driscoll. Ms. Bybee?
My, my question on the, the graph that you have on the final position counts, that there were going to be a plus two, but it says the to, the first three are title changes. Do those also come with increased salary, and is budget there to cover? I guess the first question, is it an increase in salary, and do we have the money in the budget already to cover that? Change, title changes, obviously, we've got additional, two more, a complement of two more, which is more money. But on the title changes, does it result in increased costs?
In the title changes that we have today, five of the six would be an increase in monies versus the people that would potentially fill that job today. So moving to, from the community services director to assistant city manager, there is a top range to top range increase. Going from the engineer position to the community services director, same thing, top range goes from there. The engineer?
It is the same amount that's budgeted for the current community services, so I, I don't believe there'll be an increase to the budget.
It's increased to the individual, not, not to the budget, if you will. With other positions, there'll be some minor increases that will come through in promotional processes. All of those numbers have been contemplated in the budget that we will discuss next week. It is consistent with the discussion points that we had in February 29th, as far as reclassifications across the board, all of that is part of what's being considered. These few things that drop in, there's some minor increases. Almost all the promotions at this point that we've looked at will be no more than 5% promotion for the first initial. for the first initial period that they'll have that position.
So, you said that they're, so they're individual increases in salary, but not, not for the budget, not for Community Services budget, so I'm confused on how, if we're increasing salary, how that doesn't change the budget?
Community Services Director is the same that was budgeted this year, that he would, the person who's slotted into it will get an increase, but so, it actually probably would be a budget savings by the end of the year.
So, I can use that one as a prime example. Current Community Services Director is a top range. The new Community Services Director will get a 5% promotion and will be at mid-range or below, so there'll be savings for the remainder of the period on the current Community Services Director. That savings will help pay for the differential between Admin Services and Assistant City Managers. So, if you tell me move everything around, it's fairly flat. There is some increase overall. There is room in the current budget to take care of that through other salary savings across, across the realm, and it's contemplated in the budget that we'll discuss with my final recommendations in two weeks.
Okay, so that's a $50,000 increase for fiscal year 17, is what it's showing here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I certainly believe that the City Manager, City Attorney, and whatever department head is involved in this has the right to choose who they want to fill in these positions. So, I do like all the picks, and I like everything that's going on, so I will be supporting this motion. Okay, anyone else? Questions? Motion? Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Steve, so, I got an email from one of our employers, and obviously, this is everybody moving at the same time. It seems almost, I guess, if you're on the outside of that move, it seems unfair, but what, are we going to consider taking applications for any of these positions?
Not to the outside world, but on the inside, there's going to be three movements. The Community Services Director and the Assistant City Manager are contemplated on being promoted today with the proper action of the council. Once that's in place, then we'll look at the next layer, which would be the City Engineer, and then the Assistant Community Services Director for Development. We would look at those two. In the Engineers side of it, we've had some conversations internally. We believe we may be down to one candidate, but until this is all approved, we will not make that specific. So, we will talk amongst ourselves for that next layer and decide if we want to open it up, we can, because there's only two positions that have been identified for action today. The third position, the Assistant City Manager for Development, is a position that I am handpicking as well as part of the team, but with qualifications, there's only one person that's qualified for that. So, the two planning positions will be, for all intents and purposes, opening it up internally, and we'll go. We believe that there are two very viable candidates, a third possible candidate there, so we'll consider it. The Engineering's the one that we'll have to make some decisions on. So, they're not all being, everything's not being done today. It's going to be, there's going to be three steps to it, and so, based on, I've heard from you now and another council member that that question's been asked. I met with all of the managers in the Community Services Group over two weeks ago. We explained what we were doing, what we were thinking in the process that we were going to go. I invited anyone that had a question, that they could have a private meeting with me to talk about it, including if they felt that they were a possible candidate for one of the positions that I may not have contemplated, so maybe coming from another division, and I've had two conversations, and neither one of them were about this topic.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I like this, and I'm the same with Mr. Smith. I think these positions under the first two that we're going to consider should be up to the City Manager. Those are your discretion, I think, and I think it's a fair process, and you know what? I love this process. I don't think there's anything better from somebody coming to work as a brand-new person and looking in, who wants to be here for a long time, that can see a path maybe to be the City Manager or Human Resources Director, Development, whatever. I think there's a good path there, and I like that we're doing this from the inside. I mean, that, to me, if I was coming to work as a young person here, I would say, God, this is a good place if I want to stay a long time and I do, I do good work, have a chance to be promoted to something good, so I think this is, this is good stuff. Mr. Smith?
Make a motion if you're ready. I'd like to approve the personal complement changes in the Management Services Department, Community Services Department, and the City Attorney's Office. Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve 9.3. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. 9.4, presentation, discussion, possible approval to amend the Appendix A in the Executive Resolution to Implement the Proposed Complement Change. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, City Manager, for the record, and I'm joined by Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. So, items 9.4, 9.5, and 9.6 are changes to pay resolutions for different positions that were just approved, the changes that were approved by item 9.3.
One second, Mr. Driscoll. Are you going to discuss all three of those, and then we can take them one at a time? Is that okay with the council? Okay, good, right.
So, from our point of discussion at this point, really, we need to take individual actions on 9.4, 9.5, 9.6, which each of those are doing, they're really working with job title changes, position changes, changing salary tables that are inside those resolutions, and that's really all this is, is housekeeping based on what you just approved in 9.3. So, we need to do, take them individually. We are prepared to answer questions individually on each of those pay resolutions and go forward. I do want to mention one thing about pay resolutions. There was change in previous NRS that said that you had to hold a public hearing, which is all the processes rela- to a public hearing, for labor agreements. These are not labor agreements by NRS. They are payment resolutions that are under the purview of the council. While it's not scheduled for any kind of public hearing, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate that if someone from the public had a question or wanted to have a comment on any of these, any one of these three, that if you were to allow that, that would be appropriate.
Okay.
But we're not aware that there's anyone that wants to talk.
Okay, 9.4, discussion. Anybody has questions? 9.4? Okay, looking for a motion. Oh, excuse me. Anybody in the audience? I'm sorry. Any audience want to address this, 9.4? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith? I move to, I move to approve amendment number one to Appendix A of the Executive Resolution R. 3278, including a title and salary range addition and a title change. Do you have a second? Come on, kids, isn't that this tough? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve 9.4. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.5, same thing, discussion. Anyone on the council, discussion? Audience, anyone from the audience want to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion or discussion, 9.5. Mr. Smith? I move to approve amendment number one to Appendix A of the Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorney Resolutions R. 3282, including the title and salary range additions and the salary range adjustment. Second, Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Approved by, or motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, 9.6. Discussion on the council questions? Anyone in the public like to discuss this, make a comment? Okay, 9.6, back to the council questions or looking for a motion? Mr. Smith? I move to approve amendment number one to Appendix A of the Mid Management Professional and Technical Resolution R. 3279, including title and salary range additions and deletions. Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to 9.7. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, City Manager, for the record, and I have Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, with me at the dais. Item 9.7 makes itself available based on your previous action because we have an open position in the management, in the, in the City Managers Office, and it is my suggestion, and I am looking to appoint Mr. Neil Crutts to become the Assistant City Manager in the Manager's Office, and as a result, you will see that I have revised the job description for the job from what it previously was to what it needs to be now under this tenure, and then also you have an employment agreement that has been signed by myself, the Attorney's Office, and Mr. Crutts for the terms and conditions of his employment. A couple of highlights from that, one is that it would be effective as of today if your action is to ratify him. He would go into the normal cycle of reviews for senior staff that would, in the November, December timeframe, the current contract would expire, and then would only be renewable by the terms and conditions within it, which is the action myself and or the action of the council. The salary that we're looking at is 5% over the current salary that he makes in his current position, and there will be room between this promotion and top of range for him to move into it over the next couple of cycles. With that, I'm prepared to answer. Any questions on this employment agreement?
9.7, questions from the council? Okay, anyone from in the audience want to make a public comment or statement? Okay, let's bring it back to the council for action or questions. Mr. Smith? I'm honored. I move to approve the employment agreement for Neil Crutts as the Assistant City Manager. Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Agenda Item 9.70. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Crutts.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the confidence that you all are putting in me. I've enjoyed an 18-plus-year career working in the City of Sparks. This will be my sixth position, so thank you for your commitment to promoting from within, and again, thank you for your confidence in me to give me another shot. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay.
They're coming later.
Oh, okay.
Just got a new position.
Yeah, Katie bar the door now. Okay, Mr. Driscoll, 9.8?
9.8, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on your action in 9.7, I have an open position in Community Services for the Community Services Director, and I would like to appoint Mr. John Martini to that position, which would be a promotion from his current position of City Engineer. As with the last item, the job description for Community Services Director has been reworked and modified to reflect what is currently being asked of this position, and also with this job, it requires an employment agreement similar in nature to the one we just did. It would be effective today with your approval. It would run through the end of the year, so part of the normal cycle, get him back on the same cycle as the rest of the department is. There would be a 5% promotion from his current position of City Engineer into the Community Services Director, and there will be room for him to grow financially in that over the next couple of cycles. With that, I am prepared to answer any other questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, anyone in the audience want to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for action. Mr. Smith? Again, I'm honored. I move to approve the employment agreement for John Martini as Community Services Director. Second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Congratulations, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an honor for me. I am one of those people that walked in here 17 years ago and have moved several positions along the way. I think it's ironic what life does to you at times. I think about two and a half months ago, I was sitting in Mr. Crutts's office discussing the future of the department and how we were going to handle all the challenges coming and, you know, how we're going to do the budget and what kind of staff we needed, and, well, I guess I got my answer. I'll be the one helping to figure that out, so, again, I am very appreciative and honored to sit in this position. Thank you.
Congratulations, John. Any comments, questions? Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Again, Mr. Driscoll, you know, great job. Again, I want to reiterate how wonderful I really think this is. You look at these people, 18, 17 years, that's, that's what an organization like this, I think, is all about. That's why we're a community of family-oriented people. We do good stuff. We make decisions. We get things done. We don't micromanage, I might want to add, for the most part, but this is good stuff, and it's just, I've been on the council since 1999, and I'm very proud to be here now, and I've seen these guys come up through the ranks, and they've watched me screw up for 15 years, so it's good to have you guys still aboard, and again, what a great organization we have, so thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay, 9.9 is a first reading.
First reading of Bill Number 2705, An Ordnance Amending the Sparks Municipal Code Relating to Hotels, Motels, and Other Rented Short-Term Lodging, Revising Provisions Pertaining to Police Inspection of Hotel, Motel, and Other Lodging Registers and Registration Systems, Broadening the Definition of Registration Systems to Include Modern Electronic Systems, Allowing the Owner or Operator of Hotels, Motels, and Other Rented Properties to Seek Pre-Compliance Judicial Review of Police Demands for Inspection of Registers and Registration Systems and Providing Other Matters Properly Related There Too.
This is the first reading for Bill Number 2705. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, April 25th, 2016. Okay, let's move on to public hearings. 10.1, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Five-Year Extension of the Sierra Pacific Power DBA Nevada Energy Natural Gas Franchise Agreement. Ms. Iting?
Thank you, Cheryl Iting, for the record. Today before you is the letter from Nevada Energy asking for the extension of the current agreement, which is set to run out on April 25th of this year. In the original agreement from 2006, there were two five-year extensions that were planned for or contracted for, and we're asking, or Nevada Energy is asked, and we are proposing that the first extension be granted. It's a five-year extension. With any?
Questions for Ms. Iting? Ms. Bybee?
I just have one question. I think it's probably a typo on the background. It shows in 2015, the city received, I'm guessing that's $1,562,000. There's like a period instead of a comma. Is it a million, a million, 1.5?
Correct. Sorry for that.
I thought it was. I just wanted to double-check. Okay, thanks. That's all.
Anyone else?
And for the record, representatives from Nevada Energy are here if you have any questions.
Yeah, they're very good.
Maybe worth the read. Okay. It's a public hearing, so open up to the public. Linda Bissett, please, for Nevada Energy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and members of the council. Linda Bissett with NV Energy and the Government Relations Department. Want to introduce a few people who are here that are, here in support of this item and the following one. On the left is Jim Bishon, who is the manager of our gas operations division. Next to him is Brian Costello, who is in charge of our electric operations, and he'll be available to answer questions on the next agenda item. And then also here is Edgar Patino, who is the manager of our Government Relations Division.
Welcome, gentlemen.
I want to thank the Deputy City Attorney, Cheryl Iting, and City Attorney, Chad Adams, and where is Mr. City Manager, Steve Driscoll, for their efforts in working with us, their time and effort in reviewing these documents and supporting us as we went forward with this request, working with staff to confirm that the terms that we negotiated 10 years ago were working well and were beneficial for the city and its constituents, beneficial for NV Energy customers, so we appreciate their efforts in working with us to get to this point. So, we respectfully request that you approve the extension for the gas franchise for five years.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, closed public hearing. Bring it back to council for question or action? Questions? Action? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move that the five-year extension of the natural gas franchise agreement be approved.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve Agenda Item 10.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. 10.2, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Five-Year Extension of the Sierra Pacific Power Pacific Power Company DBA Nevada Energy Electrical System Franchise Agreement. Ms. Iting?
Thank you. Cheryl Iting, for the record, City Attorney's Office. Again, this was a, an agreement entered into, a franchise agreement entered into in 2006. We are asking that the council approve the five-year extension that has been applied for under the same terms and conditions for the electric. And Ms. Bybee, I got the numbers correct on that one. There's a comma where the comma belongs. There's 3.914 million roughly that we received from the franchise agreement for the electrical in 2015. And again, we are not asking, nor do we see any need to change the terms of the contract or the franchise agreement. We'd ask that you accept the extension request.
Careful, attorney, more than one, Charles. Okay, any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so open to the public for discussion. Ms. Bissett, I'm sorry, I've tried to.
Thank you again, Mayor Martini.
Make you more exotic and call you Ms. Bissett. Ms. Bissett.
Thank you, Mayor Martini. Lynda Bissett, Government Relations Executive, NV Energy, and I will provide the same comments I did under the previous agenda item with the supporting personnel here and thanking staff for working with us on this item as well.
Great, anyone else in the public, public com? Okay, closed the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Anyone, questions? Motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move that the five-year extension of the electrical system franchise agreement be approved.
You have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Ms. Lawson, Mr. Lawson, excuse me, to approve agenda item. You didn't have a skirt on today, that was, to approve agenda item 10.2 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, NV Energy, we appreciate the, the business with, with us and thank you very much for moving on to the future. Thank you, Ms. Bissett, appreciate it. Thanks, Cheryl, appreciate it, good job. Okay, planning closed-door session, Steve? Any closed-door session?
No, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public? Anyone want to speak on their comments from the public? Seeing none, comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Driscoll?
I have some announcements, Mr. Mayor. The following committee appointments are available. Sparks Planning and Recreation Department, two members for a three-year term. Sparks Civil Service Commission, one member for a three-year term. Will be accepting applications on these positions until close of business on May 13th. We also have one position, one member for a four-year term for the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. We will be accepting applications on this position only until April 29th of this year. Persons who are interested in serving on these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you would click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application.
That's it?
That's it.
Ms. Ratty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, given the public testimony we heard today about the challenges along the river, I do feel like perhaps we may be in just a bit over our heads. I think we've got an unusual situation where because of the enforcement in Reno, there's a density of challenges that isn't typical and that we're going to make it through this first effort and then it's going to get better. But I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense through the city manager to reach out to the county manager and see if we could reach out to Washoe County Human Services for some additional support in providing extra outreach and social services as we are working our way through the implementation of our new ordinance? And I know we can't do anything for two weeks in terms of action, but just a suggestion for staff. And again, not to say that our police department can't handle it, but there's a social services side that it's not fair to ask the police department to handle.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that. We've been having internal conversations on what resources and how to proceed. The police department has put out some, some general discussion on what they're doing as they're contacting people today. And also I have, I had actually opened up that conversation a little bit with the manager from the county, saying that we're going to need to understand, you know, what services are there. We already have availed ourselves to partnering with most, with those officers, and they're, they are doing ride-alongs with us, not as frequently as we certainly would like. There's not enough horsepower there, but we're working that through. So part of the process that your staff is going through is going to be learning how to clean up the sites after they're vacated, and then really the whole issue is the vacation of the sites, what does it take, all the steps that are necessary. We believe that we have that fairly well out, but the contemplation of getting Washoe County officially involved, I welcome that direction and I will pursue that further.
Okay. And, Mr. Manager, maybe down the road, maybe not next month or this month, not next month, but maybe in June sometime, if we could get a report or a presentation on how it's going, what's going on, what kind of present, progress we're making? So again, so we can reach out to the public so they know what we're doing and how we're trying to fight this problem? So that's our meeting in June, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Leave it up to you. Anyone else, comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.